Testing 123, this will be the November 20th, 2013. This is topic eight.
Good evening. I'd like to call the order. A regular meeting, the City Council of Satellite Beach, November 20th, 2013, approximately 7:00 PM. Please join Councilman Montanaro for a short prayer and a pledge.
Lord, we thank you for the opportunity to be here this evening to serve the residents of our great city. Thanksgiving is right around the corner and we are grateful for the opportunity to be with family and friends as we celebrate today. Please watch over those living with the devastation from the tornadoes in the Midwest and the typhoon in the Philippines as they attempt to bring normalcy back to their lives. We ask that you guide us this evening as we make decisions for our city. Please watch over our military members and their families deployed all over the world that they may enjoy a blessed holiday season. If you will join me with a pledge.
Pledge will be that we are the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, thank you, Councilman Montanaro. Moving on to Agenda Item Number Three, Citizens' Comments. Floor is now open for Citizens' Comments on non-Agenda items. Here are none, close Citizens' Comments, and move on to City Council Comments. Who would like to start? Don?
Yeah, I attended the Brevard Fire Rescue Training with Courtney a couple Fridays ago. It was definitely gave me a much better appreciation of what our firefighters do. Brevard County put on a great event that day and I think they do this on a somewhat regular basis for people to come in and basically go through the same experience. And we donned fire gear and proceeded to use the Jaws of Life. We cut up a car, we took a dummy out, and let me tell you, those dummies aren't light. They're real people, dummies, and they're dead weight. We also went into a burning building dragging a hose on our hands and knees to rescue a downed firefighter and drag him out and perform CPR for what seemed like about two hours. You know, and we actually drove away from the scene like we were going to the hospital in an ambulance. It was quite an experience. I always thought I was in pretty good shape, but I was definitely lacking there for a little while. It's hard work and it's not a job for sissies, I will tell you that. I have a lot more respect for, you know, what our people do. And, you know, Scott Manning and Rhiannon Iverson were our wranglers that day and they did a great job watching out. And Jim Keating was also there and he made sure that we didn't get hurt and had water bottles there because it was a day in the low 70s. It was not hot out and the sweat was pouring off of everybody that was there doing this. And Robin Fisher, County Commissioner Fisher, was there. Let's see, his administrative aide and-
Dr. Whitton.
Dr. Whitton, the Assistant County Manager, and Frank-
Abate.
Abate. So there were, you know, there were five of us there that were doing this and participating in it, and it really was an eye-opener. So, Don, you know, your department did a great job taking care of us and Brevard Fire Rescue did a great job of putting the event on and, you know, it was definitely informative. I also attended on the 12th, the CRA Public Workshop Meeting for the A-1A corridor and that's all I have.
Thank you.
Okay. Last week I had the opportunity to attend the Department of Health meeting in Tampa as a Fall Prevention Representative, actually the statewide co-chair for the whole initiative. The city was recognized for its five years of service from 2009 to 2013 for our efforts to not only lower fall prevention within the city but throughout the state. So it was really a kind of a nice honor to get that. There were several of us that were there for those awards, but it was really very nice. The good news out of all of this is that they've been studying hip fractures and the prevalence of them throughout the state for during this entire period of time, and I'm going to read this piece of data to you. This is regarding hip fractures in adults age 65 or older. The rate of hospitalizations for hip fractures has decreased in the 75 to 84 and 85-plus age groups from the years 2010 through 2012. So we're actually beginning to lower some of the falls within the state of Florida. Nobody exactly knows how that's beginning to happen, but I think a lot of it's just awareness and just some of the activities similar to what's been done here in Satellite Beach. There's been a lot of awareness brought about regarding how falls can be prevented and I think that's beginning to go more around the state and that sort of thing. I know Don gets calls all the time on our program and how it's made a difference in our city and that sort of thing. The other thing that was announced, and I had a chance to just briefly talk to Courtney about this, is the state of Florida is going to provide many grants, up to about $5,000 for fall prevention. That announcement should come out in the next 10 to 14 days, so we might want to take a look at what we can do. In the past, we've used those grants and really stretched those dollars for long ways within our city. So, again, I want to, you know, thank the city for what they've done with this. It's very nice to see what we've done and it's nice to see some of this has taken hold throughout the state of Florida. So, Don and Police Department as well, thank you guys for all your efforts and let's keep going if we can with another grant. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much.
Real quick, I did attend the Native Rhythm Festival. I don't know if you know this, but every year they have the Native Rhythm Festival. Jim McCarthy, former Councilman and Vice Mayor of Cocoa, was one of the folks that put that event together, so it was nice to be invited as a dignitary to that festival. I attended the Planning and Zoning Board meeting this week and unfortunately I did attend, sad to say, Jackie Burns's memorial last Friday.
Thank you. I attended the Space Coast League of Cities meeting up in Titusville and the meeting prior to the regular general meeting, the city managers and mayors get together. And one of the things that we brought up as a city of Satellite Beach, Courtney and I, was to take a look into these wellness centers and which cities were interested in joining and doing the research. And I think it got a positive feedback that it's going to be something that all the cities will look into. A city our size would have a hard time doing on its own, but there's a lot of small cities like ours where if we band together, you know, might save us a fair amount of money. I also attended a couple of the CRA workshops on A-1A and I thought it was very, very interesting, very interesting because each of the different segments, a lot of the same information came out what people really want. And safety is a huge factor that we heard in every one of the meetings. So I think they're going well. The attendance has been fairly decent at these meetings. Also, today I had a great privilege, Courtney and I met with the General at the base. Great lady, very gracious to have us. We mainly talked about the Hundred Acres and how we could work together on the Hundred Acres. And she seemed very receptive to it and possibly trying to broker a meeting between us and Hunt Pinnacle and trying to get the project or at least some good dialogue started between us. So I think the meeting was very worthwhile to do. And that's all I have. Oh, one thing, can't forget, I'm sorry. December 2nd at the Civic Center, across the way here, 7:00 PM. I lead off for council on the first. I'm going to do the State of the City address on that night. So it's an open forum. Come and discuss anything you would like with us or me. Thank you. Okay, moving on to Agenda Item Five, City Attorney's Report.
The only item that I have is, the city manager and I have discussed two issues that relate to First Amendment and they have to do with what are commonly referred to as First Amendment or Free Expression Signs. And then the issue has come up in the past about the waiver of fees for certain groups for the city facilities. And I'll deal with each of them separately. The issues are similar, but they're not identical. The city currently has, how we define as political signs and they're regulated by size and location in our code, but there is no provision for what are euphemistically referred to as Free Expression or First Amendment Signs. And the distinction is, is that political signs generally relate to a candidate or issue that's going to be decided in an election and the Free Expression Signs are pretty much anything else that anybody wants to talk about. You know, stop the war, you know, that type of a thing. So the way that it's set up now and the deference that the courts give to free speech type signs, without any regulations, the courts are basically going to allow somebody to put up whatever they want. So the question becomes, does council want to regulate these types of signs and if so, how? And, you know, a lot of other cities provide for these Free Expression or First Amendment Signs and essentially regulate them the same way that they do political signs as far as the number and size. So we're just looking for a direction from council, number one, whether the city wants to have or whether council wants to provide for regulation for these types of signs and if so, the nature of the regulation. And then as far as the waiver of fees is concerned, that, there's another layer that's added to those when it has to do with city facilities because the courts look at what are, what they call it, the three forum analysis or three-four analysis, and they look at whether or not the forum that's involved is what is referred to as a traditional public forum, which are like streets and parks, whether it's a designated public forum, which is an area that the city, or in this case, the city would open up to allow discourse to occur. I don't remember who was on council at the time, but there was some discussion at one point in time to allow people to post things in the city bulletin board out front. And then we had to get into the issue about who was going to be able to do that, so we didn't do it. And then the other forum is what's called a, well, let me go back one step. The criteria utilized to analyze what or how you can regulate speech in traditional public fora and designated public fora are essentially the same. The courts look at them essentially the same as once you open it up, you basically are governed by the same rules as a traditional public forum is concerned. The last area is what's called a non-public forum and the rules are totally different regarding non-public forum. If the city doesn't open up a place for expressive activity, then the manner in which the courts look at regulating is entirely different. They just decide whether it's reasonable or not as opposed to, you know, is it the least restrictive way of regulating what is going on in the traditional, in the traditional public forum. Obviously, the city has facilities that fall within all of those forums or fora. I mean, we have parks, obviously we have streets. My guess would be that the building next door would not be a public forum, a traditional public forum. That would be a non-public forum because it's never, as far as I know, it's never been really open for speech. It's utilized for people to hold, basically just poll meetings in. So you have basically the full gamut of those fora in the city and, you know, so the next question is, well, there's two questions, is number one is, does the city want to continue to allow these exemptions? And if it does, what types of persons, for lack of a better word, whether it be individuals or groups, would be allowed to have these exemptions? And that's kind of where we are right now. And basically, we're looking for a direction on that as well. Because obviously, if you don't provide for an exemption, we don't even need to get into that conversation about the forum activity. And that's all I have.
Basically, what we would recommend is if you want to continue the exemptions, and Carrie can kind of give you an update on who we're exempting, but if you do want to, it's advisable to call out in our ordinance what those exemptions, who those exemptions apply to, if that's defined correctly.
Right. I just need general parameters so that we can figure out how to create those exemptions in the resolution.
Good thing. Carrie, you want to give us a little background, please?
The exemptions that we have established in our resolution, 934, are for the, specifically for the DAB. And I think that is all that's in writing in 934. City manager, previous city managers have had the ability to waive fees for groups such as Girl Scouts, Women's Club when they do Founder's Day, other type of things. So there are some, there are some exemptions on the books right now, but they're not in writing in the resolution. The resolution indicates that with city manager approval, they can be exempt for their activities.
I would recommend if we consistently exempt, like the Founder's Day or the Ocean Reef Beach Festival because there's a city impact, that we go ahead and call that out in the ordinance. It just makes it easier for me and it's easier for the community to understand who's getting what. It's just a better idea to do that.
I would point out one other issue is that with respect to, if we're dealing with the traditional public forum, the designated, we really can't have city manager in their discretion or his or her discretion, you can't have that at all. So I would agree with Courtney that that needs to be specifically spelled out if we're going to do those types of things.
In the ordinance here. Council wishes?
These are two separate items.
Right, let's take the second one first here.
Yeah, that has to do with what we're doing with part of that resolution tonight.
And you might want to open it up to public hearing.
Yes. Direction of council?
You know, I would just look at whoever we're anticipating that we're going to be waiving. We probably should have at least a list, you know, compiled before we make any decisions. I mean, we can talk about the generalities of what we're, you know, going to enforce and how we're going to proceed, but I would think that we, you know, would need you to put together some type of a list for us of the potential people that we might be. And I know the city has, I know when Joanne Reagan did the blood drive for years, we partnered with her and she was able to use the A-frame and the fee was waived. So, I mean, if there's things that, you know, we're going to be looking at, I would like, I'd like to make sure that we cover as many of the bases as we can to make sure that they're in the ordinance so that we're not forgetting somebody.
So the direction here is get the city manager to-
We can bring back-
Bring back the ordinance and-
A resolution.
Resolution?
Yeah, it's in the resolution.
Okay.
And there should be some reasoning behind the exemption, so we'll put that together for you in a report.
Is that fine with the council? Okay, at this time, I'll open up for any public comment on this particular item. Here are none, back to council, the sign, ordinance wishes of the council.
You know, I look at this as, I mean, I, free speech is part of what we, it's what we were founded on. Our country had the ability to do this, but I don't know if I'd want my neighbor having four or five sheets of four-by-eight plywood out in front of their house. So I would think that, you know, us doing something that puts some language in, you know, that at least has some consistency with what our signs are, I would think that would be a good thing. I don't, I don't think we would want to burden any of our residents with somebody that comes out and overshoots their bounds and creates something that's, you know, outside of the norm.
Yeah, I think that we could put the same restrictions as we do on political signs, which we regulate the number and the location, the size rather, of the signs.
Yeah, does that, would that include timeframe, which these can be up?
As a general rule, no.
So they can go on indefinitely? You can put it up for five years, the same sign if you want?
Yeah.
Okay.
On a time we've discussed it before, I think we need to go look at it.
At this time, I'll open up any public comment on this item.
On the sign issue, there are all sorts of things to consider, but when I hear Councilman Montanaro or just the council talk about, he wouldn't want something like that next door to him. And I understand, okay, I do understand. I'm not picking, you know, I'm not singling your act. The problem is that you get into delegating or restricting what a person can do on their own private property that does not impact someone else in a safety manner. That goes well beyond what the city should be able to do and well beyond what the city can do. The city should not be able to sit there and say, "We don't like this, therefore we're not going to do this" on someone's private property. You have to show that there is harm to someone. And until the city does that, it's, you're going to face, you're going to face a test somewhere down the road. You have to show actual harm. Right now, signs are restricted to not being in the right way so people can't make a turn or whatever, but you have to show harm now. And just saying, "We don't like it," doesn't show, show actual harm.
Thank you. Any further public comment on this agenda item? Excuse me, not on this agenda item, but on this matter.
You've got to correct him.
Bring it back to council.
I would just like to say one thing. I wasn't using, I used me as an example, but I can tell you that if someone put up four-by-eight sheets of plywood in front of someone's home, basically you could be harming them because if they could stay out there for an indefinite amount of time, they affect somebody's property values. So to me, that's harm. If they were next to any one of these people in here's homes, that was affecting their property value. So to me, that's harm. And I used me as an example because I didn't want to say anybody else, but we're the ones that would be getting the phone calls from people that are harmed by the fact that this is going on next door to them. So that's the way I'm viewing it.
Any comment?
Just a question for Mr. Beetle. Can you go over the safety issue? I know we've knocked that one around before.
Well, basically, I'm not sure the exact context of your question, but I also want to respond before you answer that. With respect to even these types of signs, you're entitled to regulate reasonable time, place, and manner restrictions on how that message is being conveyed or portrayed or where it is. So, you know, the fact that the city wishes to regulate these signs by saying they can be on X square foot, signs no higher than X feet above the ground, there's cases out there that have upheld that. So I'm not, I'm not, I don't understand Mr. Hadley's thing about showing harm per se, but can you, about safety, what-
I thought we talked about before, like the DOT right-of-way, signs in the DOT right-of-way and things like that.
Yeah, there's triangulation issues and that's why a lot of times there are setbacks. I mean, I think our code right now basically says it has to be X number, I don't remember what is off the top of my head, but it has to be X number of feet off the road or off the right-of-way. So that's, that's where the safety part comes in.
And the other issue too, I think, is you have commercial business owners that have to come in and get a permit for signs and they have to be built to certain specifications to be able to withstand hurricanes and things like that. And if you have a residential property owner that could put the same sized sign in their front yard without having to undergo those rigorous building permit, you know, requirements, I think we'd be inconsistent with that.
Council wishes, Courtney, to bring us back a document on this.
I would like an update on something from Mr. Beetle. I, this letter was dropped at my house that was addressed to you on November 11th from the REMS attorney. Would you mind giving an update on that?
I spoke, he called me right after, the next day, I think after the meeting, and we had a conversation and I explained to him that there was nothing that was of concern to his clients. We were just going through a different process and we're going to redo the resolution based on the notice issues that are included in the proposed ordinance. That's being considered this evening. And I got that letter that like the next day or the day after, or two days after I spoke to him on the phone and tried calling him back because I was a little, I wasn't, it was not unexpected that he would have written me a letter to confirm our conversation, but I was a little irritated about the tenor of the letter. And I called him back and he finally called me back on, I think it was either Friday or Monday. And he basically said he understood that I would be irritated by that, but he had been asked to send that letter in that manner by his client. So, but I had talked to him before that letter came out and everything seemed fine when I talked to him and it was fine again when I talked to him again. And I gave a copy of the letter to Courtney this evening as well.
I'll contact the property owner.
I'm sorry?
I'll be contacting the property owner to talk to him.
Okay, and can you distribute that letter to the council? Some of you are shaking your head like you're familiar with the letter.
I'm not. I'm shaking my head.
I just got it a little while ago, so we'll be-
Okay.
Thank you, that's it, Jim?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Any further questions for Jim? Okay. City Managers.
Well, we are moving forward through our A-1A meetings and I agree, Mayor, we're in with Councilman Montanaro. Y'all have been coming to the meetings, I appreciate that. And a lot of our advisory board members have been at the meetings too, so that's been really nice to see. We're getting some very good participation and a lot of the same issues throughout each meeting are starting to come to light. So we're getting kind of a commonality weaving through all the meetings. We have two more. One's next week on the 26th and then we'll be moving into December for the last. Then we'll be moving into creating the plan. Don't forget about the annual boat parade on the 21st of December. Some information went out that it was on the 16th, so I want to make sure everybody knows it's on the 21st. We also have our Ocean Reef Beach Festival on December 7th from 9 to 5 at Pelican Beach Park, so please don't forget to attend that. And also the Mayor's State of the City Address on December 2nd that, and this is, actually we changed it to 7.
7:00 PM.
So, don't show up at 6. I wanted to let you know that I was asked to provide a update on the clerk of court issue. We are trying to create a written response to the report. You know, we've asked for a bunch of public records, we just received them, so as we move, you know, through that analysis, I'll be meeting with you when I get it done. So I just haven't been able to get it done because we've been waiting on requests. I did want to thank our fire department. That event with what was called firefighter ops that Councilman Montanaro and I went to was very eye-opening, I think. I actually thought I was going to die by the end of that exercise. I think we all learned that I went into the right field and that I should not have gone into the firefighting field, but it was definitely a very difficult exercise, not only from a stamina and strength perspective, but from just the, the quick thinking that they have to do and watching the teamwork between Rhiannon and Scott Manning taking off the door. It took Councilman Montanaro and I 15 minutes to take the door off with the Jaws of Life. It took them maybe 60 seconds. And so it was really, it was really interesting to see. And I think it was also interesting not to, to not only see the level of training that they undergo and it's, and the benefits of it, but also when we got to have lunch and sit down with them and talk to them, that what they have to see is also pretty amazing and also what we have to thank them for, having to undergo in their jobs, because they have to experience everyone else's tragedy. And you can tell that in some of the things that they talk about, it really does still affect them from what they've seen. But they're, they're some amazing people. I think their jobs are very difficult and it's, it's very similar to, I got the chance to go to the sheriff's off, you know, at the range that they have off 95 and do an exercise through the little house with the pop-up things. And I probably shot more fake women and children in that exercise too. I definitely did not, it's a good thing I didn't go in the police field either. But the, the quick thinking and the adrenaline rush that they get every time they have to do that, we definitely have, it's definitely a job that only special people go into, I think. So I wanted to thank them. It was a very good experience. I think I, it was eye-opening from when we're looking at their resources and what they have. Our staffing level, when we had to do the paramedic part, you can see why we have that staffing level. I mean, it was very clear why you have four people on staff when you see, when you see that. To see what they all have to do and the coordination just to take care of one patient, someone has to provide chest compressions the entire time and to be able to do all the other things that you- And to be able to do all the other things that you have to do, you can see why you need that staffing profile. So I did want to thank them, and I also wanted to highlight some of the things our staff do for the holiday season in terms of supporting some of our local groups. They don't like to highlight these things, but I was going to anyway against their wishes. We have, at our DRS Center, the 55 Club, 5 Club Plus Club does a food drive for the Second Harvest every year. We have a triad senior Santa in which we do gift-giving for the seniors over at the DRS Center. The Satellite Beach Fire Department supports Toys for Tots every year, and they do Satellite Beach cares in supporting local families in need. Our Public Works Department does a lot of support for the homeless veteran families. And the Police Department does Shop with the Cop every year with, they get a Walmart grant, and then they support a lot of our abused and neglected, you know, children in the community, and they get to go shop not only in getting new toys, but also experiencing, being with a mentor for the day. So in discussing that with the team at our staff meeting, our recreation director reminded me that City Hall doesn't do anything. You know, I never get a break, you know? So we are doing a United Way campaign this year at City Hall, and we're also doing a food drive. So if you have any, you know, some food that you want to drop off, we're partnering with our local churches to get that done. So we are going to do something this year. I also want to let you know that we are beginning training with ADP today, which are payroll processing, and we will be starting with that, actually, them doing the payroll in February. And I am pleased to announce that by next week, hopefully, we'll be accepting credit cards. Cross your fingers. So that is on its way. And hopefully, by next summer, we'll be accepting credit cards online with the recreational So I wanted to also add two action items for you. The first is, we are, have a engineer's contract for our city engineer. It's set to expire in March, so we need to get on that RFP. Our recommendation would be to go ahead and allow staff to submit that RFP out or, you know, release that RFP and get that started. So we're asking for your direction to be able to submit an RFP very similar to the one that was sent out in 2005.
Consider.
I just have one question in the, on page, I guess it says four of seven on the top. When it says, the evaluation criteria, it says past performance and experience. Past performance with the city, I mean, that would certainly limit.
What is it?
On page four of seven under the RFP.
Past performance and experience, I mean, that's very similar to any proposal. They would have to list all of their projects that they've done and their experience and being an engineer.
No, I understand, but are you saying past performance with the city or just any?
Yeah, it's just past performance and experience, yeah. That's what the.
It's kind of like a resume of what we've done.
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
Part of the qualifications.
Counselor Witches. Let me open it up since it is an action item for public comment on this particular action item. Hearing none, back to council. I just think direction.
I also have one other item before we, I'll let you off the hook. We have, our first meeting in January is actually on New Year's Day. And so staff is seeking direction to go ahead and cancel that meeting. We'll have a meeting, just because of the setup in January, a meeting smack in the middle of the month, and I'm not, we're not recommending to change any meetings in the month of December, but we would have to cancel that meeting on New Year's Day, if that's good for you. We'll go ahead and put that.
We have both meetings in December, on the 4th and the 18th.
Yes, sir.
Okay. You okay?
Okay. So in January, we'll have one meeting.
One meeting?
Yeah.
It's the 15th of January, is that right?
Yes, sir.
Finest, everyone? Is that according?
That's it.
Thank you very much. Moving on to Agenda Item Number Seven, discuss, take action on Resolution 941. Jim?
Resolution Number 941, a resolution of the City of Satellite Beach, Brevard County, Florida, establishing policies, procedures, and fee schedules for use of Satellite Beach facilities, repealing resolutions number, resolution numbers 543, 559, 572, 698, 725, 744, 749, 756, 786, 843, 862, 873, 915, 932, and 934, providing an effective date.
Thank you.
Move to adopt Resolution 941.
Motion by Councilwoman Gott, second by Vice Mayor Breimer to adopt Resolution 941. Any comments from council?
Can I just quickly go over the changes that?
The Recreation Board, their September 10th meeting, reviewed the impact that would lead to the made on organizations that deserve resources more than once a month. And in doing that, they go out to three organizations because of the frequency per month meeting, the increase in fees would seem to be pretty dramatic for them. The biggest one is probably Bingo Food, they're paying $96 a month. Now, they would be paying $240 a month, I believe, these days. So the phase-in that's recommended by Recreation Board would be a two-year phase-in, half of the difference in 2014, and the other half of the difference is developed in 2015. In summary, what would happen is, if we phased these three groups in over two years, a loss to the city next year would be about $2,700, $2,700. If those organizations chose not to return just because the jump in fees even supported, we would lose about $200, $2600. So it's kind of better to lose $2,700 than to lose $2,600. And.
Further questions? Hearing none. At this time, Councilwoman Deena, are you finished with your questions? I'm sorry.
Yeah.
At this time, I'll open up for public comment on this agenda item. Hearing none, back to council. Any further discussion from council?
It's pretty substantial. A lot of those folks that go to Bingo are taxpayers, local residents. I think it's a pretty substantial jump. I just want to note that.
Thank you. Again, any further discussion? Carrie, the board's been over this for quite some time, correct?
I think the problem actually is the fact that our fees are so ridiculous to be low. The same Bingo is like $6 an hour for 80 people to play Bingo, and the oddity. So even by raising it to $15 an hour, that's a pretty good price per hour for an oddity that holds 75 people. But it's just the delta there that's going to be hard to swallow.
This was a unanimous decision too at the Rec Board meeting. They've been talking about this for a while, and as the liaison to that board, I've been in all the discussions of this. And, you know, we're just trying to be consistent with the other municipalities around us and what they charge. I mean, we're not charging any more. We're actually still lower than some of them.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Lenore?
Councilwoman Deena?
Yes.
Councilman Montanaro?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Breimer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gott?
Yes.
Yes, motion carries. Thank you, Carrie. Moving on to Agenda Number Eight, discuss, take action on the 2013 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistant Grant. Good evening.
Good evening.
Where are you?
We just want to actually go ahead and see with the grant to purchase video cameras for the evidence room, which currently doesn't have video recording. The grant area opened up October 28th, I believe, and it's a period of September 1st and June 1st.
Thank you. Counsel?
Move to approve submitting the 2013 JAG grant application in the amount of $1,281 for enhanced evidence room security.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Gott, second by Vice Mayor Breimer. Discussion from council. Hearing none, open up to the floor for Agenda Number Eight, citizens' comments.
Steve Osmer, resident. I'd just say I would support this, and one of the reasons being is, you may have known from the news, that West Melbourne had a problem with an officer and created quite a scandal doing with evidence rooms and stuff like that. And also, I was bearing on cases later on down the road, should you have a problem with evidence and stuff like that, if someone suspects tampering. So by all means, I think, even from a liability standpoint, this is a better protection for the city to do this, and with grant money, I think, to me, that's a no-brainer.
Thank you very much. Floor is still open for public comment. Hearing none, back to council.
This grant is basically freebie. They allocate, they tell us in other jurisdictions, an amount that's been designated for them, so it's a sure deal.
Great.
And very helpful.
Okay, any further comment?
Yeah, we've used these in the past on a regular basis. These building grants, we've gotten these in the past regularly.
Further comment from council? Hearing none, Lenore?
Councilwoman Deena?
Yes.
Councilman Montanaro?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Breimer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gott?
Yes.
Mayor Deena?
Yes, motion passes. Thank you very much. Moving on to Agenda Number Nine, discuss, take action on the fire department, grant authorization for cardiac monitoring and patient care simulator.
United States Fire Administration's Assistance Firefighters Grant period opens up in the grant close December 6th. The grant authorization, one of the things that we're looking as far as future utilization is our cardiac heart monitors are coming to the end of their life cycle and what will be available to service. And we already have some in our planning for replacement in the coming years. We'd like to take the opportunity to go ahead and apply for a grant now, it's a 95% grant, 5% match on our side. Just as a, to reference the heart monitors themselves, our heart monitors are approximately $35,000 each. All the monitors that we have in our department, we have either received them through grants or we have done donations for upgrades and all that, and we're just continuing forward and using grant money. Additionally, that grant is also, we'll be requesting a request for essentially a patient mannequin simulator for both adult patients and cardiac patients. The last mannequin that we purchased that allows purpose, perform their skills, simulate drug blocks and stuff, we purchased with a grant in 1995, and that mannequin has certainly exceeded its useful lifetime. And obviously, I think we'd rather have our medics practice in mannequins than people. So, and the cost of those two mannequins would be approximately $35,000. So in total, I'm requesting a maximum of $95,000 authorization, 5% match, the $4,750 match come from the advanced life support trust fund.
Thank you very much. Counsel comments?
Move to authorize staff to submit an assistance to firefighters grant for cardiac monitor replacement and patient care simulator with a total cost not to exceed $95,000 and a 5% city match of $4,750 to come from the Advanced Life Support Trust Fund.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Gott, and second by Vice Mayor Breimer. At this time, I'll open this up to public comment, any public comment on this agenda Hearing none, back to council.
We do need a clarification here. On that grant authorization form, it shows in the middle section for matching funds, $4,750, and in two other places, it shows $4,250. What's the city match?
$4,750. No. Just say up to $4,750. Up to $4,750? I'm pretty sure it's $4,750.
I think it's $4,750. I believe it's.
Okay, then I amend my motion to change the $4,250 amount to $4,750.
I have an amended motion by Councilwoman Gott, and then a second by Vice Mayor Breimer. Further discussion from council? Hearing none, Lenore?
Councilwoman Deena?
Yes.
Councilman Montanaro?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Breimer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gott?
Yes.
Mayor Deena?
Yes.
Thank you.
One last thing. Facebook likes are 201 with the city managers and council.
Thank you.
Moving on to Agenda Item 10, discuss, take action on a small-scale amendment, Number 2013-1, for rezoning the property located at 1753 to 1773 Highway A-1A.
These are two parts to this. The first one is Ordinance Number 1078. Jim?
Ordinance Number 1078, an ordinance of the City of Satellite Beach, Brevard County, Florida, amending the City of Satellite Beach 1998 Comprehensive Plan as amended by revising the future land use map on a certain tract of land more particularly described herein from residential high density to commercial and services, providing for inclusion of ordinance and revised future land use map in the comprehensive plan, providing an effective date. That's the second reading of Ordinance Number 1078.
Motion to approve ordinance Number 1078 on second reading.
Second. I have a motion by Vice Mayor Breimer, second by Councilwoman Gott. Discussion from council? Hearing none, open this portion to public comment. Hearing none, back to council. No further comments? Lenore?
Councilwoman Deena?
Yes.
Councilman Montanaro?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gott?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Breimer?
Yes.
Mayor Deena?
Motion carries five, nothing. Moving on to the second part, Ordinance Number 1079. Jim?
Ordinance Number 1079, an ordinance of the City of Satellite Beach, Brevard County, Florida, amending the official zoning map to change the designation from residential mixed-use RM3 to commercial C for property located at 1753 to 1773 Highway A-1A, described as a galley by the sea in Block E, lots 1, 2, 3, 4, 21, 22, 23, and 24, directing the city clerk to make changes to the city's official zoning map, providing an effective date. It's the second reading of Ordinance Number 1079.
Motion to approve ordinance Number 1079 on second reading.
Second. I have a motion by Vice Mayor Breimer, second by Councilman Montanaro to approve ordinance Number 1079. Further discussion from council? Hearing none, open it for public comment on Ordinance Number 1079. Hearing none, back to council.
I just want to say, Dave, I'm glad we were able to help you with this and work through this, so I hope you and Kathy are thrilled.
Thank you. Hearing no further discussion, Lenore?
Councilwoman Deena?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gott?
Yes.
Councilman Montanaro?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Breimer?
Yes.
Mayor Deena?
Yes, motion carries. Thanks, Dave, for the numbers. Appreciate it. Moving on to Agenda Item Number 11, discuss, take action on Ordinance Number 1080. Jim?
Ordinance Number 1080, an ordinance of the City of Satellite Beach, Brevard County, Florida, amending appropriations of funds for fiscal year 2012-2013 budget, Ordinance Number 1061. Said ordinance was previously amended by Ordinance Number 1070, providing an effective date. It's the second reading of Ordinance Number 1080.
Thank you.
Motion to approve ordinance Number 1080 on second reading.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Breimer, second by Councilman Montanaro. Discussion on Agenda Item Number 11, Ordinance Number 1080. Counsel, any further?
I have a question. Page 27, capital asset, what happened to the football field expansion money?
This is last year's year-end budget amendment.
Oh, I see. Never mind, never mind.
Further discussion? At this time, open up for public comment. Hearing none, back to council. Any further discussion from council? Hearing none, Lenore?
Councilwoman Deena?
Yes.
Councilman Gott?
Yes.
Councilman Montanaro?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Breimer?
Yes.
Mayor Deena?
Yes, motion carries five, nothing. Moving on now to Agenda Item Number 12, discuss, take action on Ordinance Number 1081. Jim?
Ordinance Number 1081, an ordinance of the City of Satellite Beach, Brevard County, Florida, creating a new Division III, Article III, Chapter 30, Satellite Beach City Code, establishing process and notice required for vacating, abandoning, and discontinuing public streets, alleys, canals, easements, and other non-fee interests, providing severability, providing effective date. It's the first reading of Ordinance Number 1081.
Thank you. At your desk, I believe, everybody received a updated version of 1081. At your desk, I believe everybody received a updated version of 1081, or some strike throughs. Pardon?
As discussed at the last meeting, this is the right-of-way vacation and easement vacation procedures and processes for the city that we're recommending. You did recall that we had a discussion about the ordinance that went through P&amp;Z, and based on the public comment we got at the last meeting, we'd made some significant changes to this ordinance, also because of the notice requirements of Chapter 177. So, basically, what we did was, we replaced the requirement for the notification of the city with the add requirement of Chapter 177, and with an additional add to planning and zoning. We also removed a requirement for like property, when you're vacating easement on a canal, to provide a like easement on the water somewhere else. We removed that requirement for the canal portion, but we retained that requirement for the beachfront. We are recommending approval. Based on these additional changes, and the items that we passed out to you tonight, are basically wording changes that editorial changes we worked with Counselwoman McGott to correct some of the language and make some consistency changes. We also did some, included some recommendations that we received from a citizen. John Fergus had sent in some recommendations. We included some of those, which primarily was the planning and zoning legal ad, and some small language changes. So, I mean, that's, it's pretty cut and dry. Basically, we have basic criteria for waterfront and right-of-way vacations in the redevelopment district, but the rest is very, you know, just a typical procedure and process consistent with Chapter 177.
Thank you. Counsel comments?
Yeah, I would like to comment. I mean, I've reviewed the, I don't have it with me, the original ordinance that went to planning and zoning, and there are substantial changes. I would prefer that it went back to planning and zoning because the changes are substantial. And then, Jim, the ordinance, this ordinance that you drafted, it's just saying the county may, upon its motion, and then we had the big discussion about resolution versus ordinance, and it's not even required that we go through this process and the end result be a resolution of ordinance. So, I wanted to know how you came up with that.
I didn't, well, I mean, I guess the best way to say this is, I originally drafted this ordinance predicated upon, for lack of a better way of putting this, before Mr. Langley's opinion, and then it was modified to coincide with Mr. Langley's opinion, which provides for the notice requirements that are included in here. And the decision, the draft that I had provided was that, well, I'll just go back. But then, the decision was made that the ordinance that was going to come before Counsel would require that the, that the city will only vacate by ordinance. So, it came out of staff that that's how staff wanted it to be presented now to Counsel, that it would be done by ordinance, rather than resolution.
But in this ordinance, it says the Counsel may, upon its own motion, vacate in Section 3332, and then it says the Counsel may by ordinance. It should say shall by ordinance.
Where is that?
On page five. So, this is also, I just think it needs to be vetted back through planning and zoning since there were substantial changes, including the notification process for east of A1A being the entire city and west of South Patrick Drive being the entire city. And then, of course, new revisions dropped on the dais tonight. I'd rather see it vetted back through and pulled other ordinances. This is definitely unique as far as vacations to others that are in Brevard County and throughout the state, and I would like a little more time to review it.
Is this the wording that the attorney pulled from the state statutes?
Yes. Well, and then we also added an additional legal advertisement for the planning and zoning board. But the decision between an ordinance and a resolution, it's kind of mute because of these advertising requirements. So, you have to do two weekly advertisements per Section 177, and if you're going to do that, you have to do the same advertisement for an ordinance. So, you know, it just coexists. And we put that in here, that the ordinance, the second notice for 177 would be considered the same notice requirement for the second reading ordinance advertisement of Chapter 166, I think it is.
177.
So, it's, you know, there's two statutes that regulate the vacation and abandonment of property, and we're going with 177. So, this is how we would do it. We added one extra planning and zoning legal advertisement, the application requirements, as well as the procedures for submitting an application, and very similar to what other cities do. I think the only difference that we have in this ordinance that's specific to our city are the criteria for the redevelopment district and the criteria for the beachfront properties. So, you know, the planning and zoning board recommended approval for the ordinance. They had a couple of changes with a section that we removed. So, we replaced that section with the advertising requirements of the statute. I don't think that's going to change because it's a statute requirement.
Thank you.
But what I'm saying is, the meat of the ordinance has changed since it went to planning and zoning in August, substantially. And these recommendations are from one councilperson who should go over them, and the ordinance was written, and we should make motions on each one of the changes. I find some issues in here. There's no timeframe for review. It's just open whenever the city has to.
There's 15 days.
Seems that complete. I just, I think it should be vetted back through.
There's a review, there's a review period of 15 days when we get a complete application. And if you look at other, any other application process of any city, all of those review periods are based on a complete application. Because you can have somebody submit an application with none of the required attachments, no surveys, no letters, and then let it sit there, and then submit all of that the last day. And we have to scramble around and create a staff report in a day because they submitted the last of the complete application on day 15. So, that's why you structure your review period when they submit a complete application. The other issue is, the items that were changed by Counselwoman McGott were literally editorial. Nothing was substantive. So, we can, we can, I would recommend not dragging this out. I mean, I think we need to move on. We have applicants waiting, so we, I think we need to get it done.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Further comments?
I have one too. Go ahead, Jim. Go ahead, go.
Yeah, I'm having trouble hearing tonight because of a congestion that I have, but I think there was a statement that one councilmember made these changes. There was no councilmember that made these changes. These changes came from other sources, to include an attorney. The councilmember simply edited for consistency of terminology, spelling, punctuation, the usual. And where sentences were not clear, one or two words were added to make the sentence read clearly. But none of these provisions came from any councilmember. Regarding the planning and zoning board, the planning and zoning board makes recommendations to the city council. There is no requirement that every time the council changes something, it has to go back to P&amp;Z. The council is free to make whatever changes they want after the P&amp;Z board has submitted their recommendations. I would not be in favor of dragging this out any further and returning it to the planning and zoning board. There is, on page, on page five at the bottom under Section 30-336, there may be some confusion here in this first sentence. Right now, it reads, "City Council May By Ordinance Authorize Vacation," and I think some may take that to mean that the council may do this action by ordinance. That sentence can be clarified by simply changing it to read, move the by ordinance to the front of the sentence and say, "by ordinance, city council may authorize vacation, abandonment, and so forth." And then, that shows that if the council authorizes, then it must be by ordinance.
Thank you.
So, Jim, basically, what you have done with this, as far as your review goes, is you've taken Mr. Langley's comments and incorporated them into this document. Is that?
I was given.
No, 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 I'm talking to Jim.
Oh, okay.
Actually, my understanding is, I mean, I was asked to look at this, but I also, I went through it and just looked at it for consistency from the prior version versus what Mr. Langley opined, and then I suggested that Courtney sent it by Mr. Langley, let him look at it, since it was his opinion that generated the change. So, he's actually made some changes himself.
Got the ownership for the changes on this. That's why I want to clarify. Got you. Okay.
Further counsel comment? Hey, let me, you. At this time, I'd like to open it up for public comment on this agenda item. Citizens first. Hearing none. Seeing one. Yes, sir, in the back.
Dale Abrams. I live in the CRA. I would like to, I concur with Ms. Deanen. I think it should go back to planning and zoning. Take another look at it. Haven't spent a little more time studying it. I live in the CRA. I live on the beach, and I will be affected by this. So, I want to make sure that we understand exactly what's in here.
Thank you very much.
Vic Ringgart, former resident of 140 Park Avenue, Satellite Beach.
Vic, please tell us where you live at this.
607 De Soto Lane, Indian Harbor Beach, 15 feet from Satellite Beach.
Thank you.
This ordinance, 1081, vacates public streets, alleys, canals, easements, and other fee, non-fee interests. This is not a trivial ordinance. Having sat on Brevard County's Planning and Zoning Board, and having looked at this and looked at the original, and listening to the comments that were made, it looks like to me that there is a rush to run this thing past the council without proper vetting. I certainly think that it requires much more vetting than just trying to imply that this was Scrivener's notes types of comments and changes. I think this should go back to the Planning and Zoning Board for proper review. This is not a trivial ordinance.
Thank you. Further comments? Hearing none. Bring it back to Counsel.
Mr. Mayor, I want to make a correction.
Okay.
No one said that this is just Scrivener's changes. City manager delineated all the substantive changes that have been suggested in this document, and so, this is not a Scrivener's matter.
I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance 1081 with the changes that were mentioned in Section 30-336.
On first reading?
On first reading.
Second.
I have a motion by Counselman Montanaro, second by Counselwoman McGott. Further discussion from Counsel?
Yep. On page three, just for the record, B, all property owners abutting the public street, alley, canal, easement, or non-fee interests of the city or portion of the estate to be vacated, abandoned, or discontinued who agree or consent thereto must join and sign such application or execute a consent form. If any abutting property owners object to the application, the application shall disclose the name and address of those property owners. I've never heard of such hot blocks, and I reviewed a lot of ordinances. I'm not going to support this. You need to sign the existing application for the vacation and then, or sign a consent letter. Never heard of anything like this before in any ordinance. I'm not going to support this ordinance as written.
If, do I mean to talk? Please. If you vacate a public street in front of a person's property, they have to agree to accept the property. So, that's the purpose of this. So, if they don't want the property, then that would be included in the application for you to consider. The other item is, you know, if they object, for example, if you're blocking their access, then that's something that you want to know, too. In every case of any vacation that I've worked on, we contact all the property owners that abut the right-of-way vacation, and they let us know whether they want it or not.
I understand. I'm asking them to sign the application. Jim, that could become a legal issue, asking them to sign a petitioner's application.
You're asking them to sign for the property owners that are abutting the right-of-way that's being sought to be vacated, the portion of the right-of-way? Yes, they must sign that vacation, of course. I mean, you wouldn't, a property owner wouldn't request a right-of-way vacation for a property that's in front of somebody else's property.
I completely understand, but I'm not going to argue, I'm not going to argue, I'm just not going to support this ordinance as written. I think there's a lot of issues with them that really need to be discussed at length. And, you know, this is not new. This is, this ordinance has been requested for many years now, and now I see changes, substantial changes from planning and zoning through now to an attorney opinion from an outside attorney, and I think it's an important ordinance, and I think there's a lot of issues with it.
Thank you for your comments. Further comments from Counsel? No. Hearing none. Lenore?
Councilwoman Deanen?
No.
Vice Mayor Breimer?
Yes.
Councilwoman McGott?
Yes.
Councilwoman McGott? Councilwoman Montanaro?
Yes.
Mayor Cattino?
Yes. Motion carries. Moving on to Agenda Item Number 13, Agenda Item for next regular counsel meeting.
Well, thank you, Mayor. We'll be recognizing a police department volunteer at this meeting. We'll also be going through a series of resolutions dealing with the vacating of the roads and the vacating of the easements in the past, trying to rectify that situation. You're going to see the second reading of the ordinance you just passed. And then, we may be submitting a resolution for your consideration regarding taking a stance on this uniform chart of accounts issue regarding Senate Bill 1292. So, we'll have, we'll have more information on that if that's something you all would like to consider. We also will be discussing the signed moratorium ordinance at this meeting.
Thank you very much. Any further agenda items that Counsel would like to see? Please get with the city manager.
I'd just like to point out to Counselwoman McGott, Agenda Item Number Two. Do you like it? Agenda Item Number Two.
Oh, yes.
When you're on a roll.
I forgot one item that we added, will be adding to this agenda. We will be bringing to you a proposal, a funding proposal to replace the playground equipment at Pelican Beach Park. That's kind of gotten to a critical standpoint at this point, so we'll bring that back to you some way to get that done, because we have to do that.
Thank you. Any further comments on this agenda? Okay. Moving on to Agenda Number 14, Adoption of Minutes, November 6, 2013 Workshop Meeting and November 6, 2013 Regular Meeting.
Move to adopt the minutes as submitted.
Motion by Counselwoman McGott, second by Counselman Montanaro. Any further discussion from Counsel?
No, sir.
Hearing none. Lenore?
Councilwoman Deanen?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Breimer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Montanaro?
Yes.
Councilwoman McGott?
Yes.
Mayor Cattino?
Yes. Motion carries. Any further business before Counsel? Hearing none. Meeting's adjourned. Thank you. Happy Thanksgiving, everybody.